First thing on the agenda is we'll need a motion to approve the agenda.
I make a motion, we approve the agenda.
Support.
Any corrections, deletions? Hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, same sign. Public comments, anyone who'd like to speak before we get into our agenda. I assume everyone's had a chance to review the minutes of June 3 and 12. We need a motion to approve the minutes.
That will be approved, the minutes on June 3rd and June 12th.
I second that.
Any deletions or corrections? Hearing none, all those in favor approving the minutes, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Infard and Chamber report. Deanna and Ann. And my other sister.
Okay. Good afternoon. When I did my yearly ask last year, I said that I would come and give quarterly updates. And so that's what I'm here for today, is to give the quarterly update. So the second quarter has been very productive. Part of our goals for the Chamber was to start keeping track of data and numbers. And so the first one is the quality of life events. We had quite a few attendings to the annual banquet. We had the largest golf event to date. And we had some 10 corporate sponsors for our Chamber events. And so these events so far have started off the year very well. Some of this money does go into our general fund. And so that was good to see a larger number of people coming out and supporting us. Calendar events for the season, you can see that for the second quarter coming up through September. Revolving Loan Fund, Dee's going to talk about that. We have some money that is available to lend. And we would like to see some of that money go out to some industry or businesses. So we can get some more economic development here in the community. We did have one luncheon learn, and that was hosted by Neapolitan Labs. And it was talking about Google My Business and how to claim your Google address. So that way people can find your business a lot better. And those are all great ways to help support businesses in Osceola and Mahaska County. Our new billboard is going up, which is going to be nice. Dee picked that up. And it's going to go out on Highway 163 by Westlake. We visited high schools this year. Dee and I went over to New Sharon. And we presented info to the North Mahaska High School students for their career exploration program. And then Dee and I also spent a morning over there learning about their welding and different programs that they have over there. And the partnership that they're creating with local manufacturers to send out certified welders once the kids graduate from high school. Dee and I have also started the synchronous visits. And we've done county visits. I was over in New Sharon with Snyder Manufacturing the other day. And we have Precision Foods scheduled coming up. And some other ones out in the county, and Dee can talk about those too. We did have strategic planning, which took place on May 29. And we have a follow-up date to talk about the organization, workforce, housing in a few weeks. And I believe Steve, you were a part of that.
Yeah.
Did you enjoy that day there?
Yep, it was a good day.
It was a good day. We got a lot of information out of people that came.
Got to meet some new people, really enjoyed it.
Yeah, yeah, it was a good time. We purchased a CRM, Customer Relation Management and Project software. And so we are just starting to touch on that. All of our business visits, synchronous visits are being put into that program. So hopefully we can pull more and better data out of that, once we input that. And then also, Community Partner Letter is getting ready to go out as it's the beginning of our fiscal year on July 1. And I just wanted to give you guys a copy of the letter. It just talked a recap of what we've done this last year. And one thing I wanted to highlight was some of the community tours. Dee and I going out to the different communities, New Sharon, Barn City, Fremont, Eddyville, and just touching base with those business owners and manufacturers. And Dee also assisted three Mahaska County communities with five grant applications. And so she's just a really valuable asset in what she does. We thank you for the support of the Chamber.
Thank you, Ann.
Yeah.
Thank you.
So synchronous visits, as Ann touched on, a few happening in the county. Mid-American Utilities is Mahaska County serviced. Those are important to utility companies. We have a few on the books that have never received a visit before. So we're going to try and get them on. They're not a key account for Mid-American, but still get their information in the system. Because a lot of those small businesses, one for example, like RP Support America, a great company in rural Iowa, so it's not a key account for them, but it is an important asset to Mahaska County. So some of those. And then Revolving Loan Fund, Mark, you're on that committee. Steve, at the board meeting, we talked about having a, maybe a seminar or something in the fall to let people know how much money we do have available to lend for expansions, get the commercial lenders in, and have this kind of a luncheon learn or business before breakfast. So hopefully we can do that in the fall. Of course, the 4H Ethical Day BBQ coming up, July 18. Hopefully you guys will attend and help me with ticket taking again.
We will be there.
I think that is all.
Fun and food, why not?
That's right. And the heat, don't forget the heat.
No tornado this year.
No tornadoes, no.
Who's your contact, personally about that?
Deb Calvert, yes. Yep, he's at the Indian Hills meeting this week, yep. Any other questions?
Thank you, Ann. Dave.
There you are.
Thank you, Dave. Conservation report.
I don't have any report yet today, sorry. I was gone all last week and got here today. I didn't realize how many emails I get in a week. A quick update, thanks to all you guys who are out there, a grand opening for the ELC. The Chamber helped us with that ribbon cutting also. Before I leave, I'd kind of like to give, you know, you guys' thoughts on the grand opening. We, it's kind of, I've been trying to play catch up because I was gone, but the campground's still shut down because of flooding. But we're going to try to have it open before this weekend. The water's off the roads in Eddyville now, so it's going to be trying to get it cleaned up and get it opened back up. Today, I just, before this, had a visit from Congressman Lobosack. He went out to the Learning Center and wanted a tour. Spent an hour with him, he's pretty impressed with, he says in his district or county the size, he was impressed that a project of that magnitude could take place. And stressed that it took a lot of people and, you know, a lot of moving parts to make that work. But other than that, we're just trying to, you know, keep our heads above the water, so to speak. If the big things can get campground open and we have some grass seed, we still have to get done.
They're going to let less, they're closing the dam down, aren't they? Letting less see if there's...
Yeah, they're starting to let less on us down. And it's, like I said, this morning, the water's at least off the roads in the park. So it's going down, and now it's just a matter of cleanup. Getting all the tables and stuff back out, so we're really hoping, we're hoping by this weekend.
I thought the opening was well-attended. I think if you get the swimming pool and the elevator fixed, it'll be good.
Yeah. Well, it's still, it's dry, but the new pump is in India, so it's not functioning, it's out of lock. Yeah, that kind of threw a monkey wrench into the plans of the day.
Getting all started, started the part up.
Yeah.
I thought the shuttle went really good. It was really nice, the people had a way to ride back and forth from the church parking lot down to that.
Yep, and that's between MCR and Hillside Church. They let us use the parking lot, MCR let us use the shuttles, I thought it worked.
Give them a big thank you, will you?
Yep, we will. We're going to act, we're going to put a thank you in the paper. Because that was, the one thing for me is, at the ribbon cutting, I was kind of leery of thanking people, because I knew I was going to leave somebody out. And I didn't know who was there, who wasn't there, so it's been kind of interesting. Looking at pictures afterwards, it's like, oh, I didn't see them, or I didn't know. And I would have left somebody out, and I'd rather leave everybody out and do a big thank you at the end. Have everybody mad if you want to send just a few people.
There you go.
So what do you think?
It was excellent, turned out.
And it didn't rain? We should have had it like a month before, because we knew it wasn't going to rain today. But it rained open.
No, it was a nice day, you had a good day and everything, so. Very good, very well done, Dave. Now we're started, just got to finish.
Yep. That's the fun part, is there's still more displays coming in, moving things around. So we want to keep the pressure, people keep coming back. And we've had pretty good attendance. And the thing that surprised me is how much usage it gets from people on the rep trail. If I'm out there working at night, you know, after hours, the number of people that park in the back parking lot and go walk their dogs or walk the trail and stuff, it's, it actually so far has been getting more use than I even anticipated.
Very good. Sounds good, appreciate it.
Thank you, thanks, Dave.
We've got two payroll changes for the Sheriff's Department. We've got Jailer Kyle Benton, wants to, last day of work to be June 17, which is today.
Jailer Jesse Cranston, I believe his is today also. Both full-time kids, both are going, I did have an exit interview with both of them. Both going to a neighboring sheriff's office for more money. Just that simple. More money, they start over there Wednesday. They get $3 an hour or more the day they walk in Wednesday. And I don't know how long their probationary period is. I don't know, three or six months, then they get an additional $3 an hour. So that's where they're going. We're in the process of taking applications, have started the interview process, have a few applications in. So hopefully get them filled soon.
Did you tell them we're going to try and fix the air conditioning or not?
What's that?
Did you tell them we're going to try and fix the air conditioning?
No. That never came up.
So I need a motion to remove Kyle Benton and Jesse Cranston from the payroll effective June 17. Got to make that a motion.
Second that.
Any further discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign.
Thanks, Russ.
Thank you, Sheriff. Discussion and possible action on learning Law Enforcement Center cooling system. We've had an air conditioner go down.
Yeah, our main unit for the jail, 22 years old. And we put several compressors in that unit. And now it isn't really feasible to fix it. It's $1,700 more dollars. We can have the whole unit with oils and everything, so. Met some cunning hands, and they're, they found this unit. We just, of course, we don't have it in our budget in the building, but, so I'm here to see you. You guys are going to pay for it.
Yeah, this is an item that's not budgeted anywhere, so. Just to be honest, Troy has talked to all of us last week of this situation. Nearing the end of our budget cycle, June 30. We've done, we've already done our budget amendment, so there's no money in this year's budget. So we're hoping we can stretch it out and pay for it after July 1, take out a general fund. So I think it's, I think we need air conditioner over there for the jailers. That building can get awful warm and humid, so.
Do you need a motion for that?
Need a motion to approve fixing the Law Enforcement Center cooling system for $17,033.
I make that motion?
I'll support it.
Any further discussion?
When will this be completed?
This week, go for it.
This week. And you talked about them having to hold the money till July 1, same thing to them?
Yeah, but I don't think we even be invoiced before that 24th, you know, that's our cutoff. And like Mark said, maybe we can just do a special check or something on first, so they're not waiting another week.
We'll make it work, it's kind of a necessity. Any further discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Approved Resolution 2019-21. This is a resolution where the Cedar Township is building a new fire station in the city of Fremont. They're, the townships are not allowed to borrow money at a bank. And so they need a bond through the county. And so they've done their work, and now they present us with a resolution to bond $355,000 in which the townships will then be taxed and paid back the county on. So they've done their work, they present us with a resolution to start the action we need. And in so doing, we need a set of public hearing. And I'm going to make the suggestion we have a public hearing on July 1 at 9 o'clock. So I'll make the motion, we approve Resolution 2019-21 with the public hearing being on July 1 at 9 o'clock AM.
Second that.
Any further discussion? All those in favor of Resolution 2019-21, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. We've got a computer maintenance agreement for fiscal year '19 and '20 with solutions incorporated. This is a computer technology that most of our auditors and treasurers obviously use for the programming. And so we need to renew the contract for fiscal year '19 and '20.
I make a motion that we pass the, vote for the solutions for the computer maintenance. Support.
Any further discussion? All those in favor of the computer maintenance agreement, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. We've got a city fireworks display for the city of Lighten. Calvin, would you like to say any words? Are you still involved there?
Yeah, I'm on the committee.
Would you like to say anything?
No. For a big celebration that day, no rain on the Friday before.
I move to approve the resolution, or excuse me, I move to approve the fireworks display application for the city of Lighten.
Support.
Any further discussion?
I got a little discussion on it. I was talking to somebody from Lighten, and I guess because of the terrorists on fireworks from China, they were either going to have to cut their display or add more money to it, and Lighten decided to add more money. So I just thought that was a good move by the city of Lighten, I think. And I'd just like it out there, so everybody come and enjoy it.
Thank you.
Yep.
That'll be on the, on June 28. All those in favor of the fireworks display, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, same sign. We need to approve an official county seal design. Would you like to say any words on this, too? It has to deal with the elections.
The legislature had approved earlier this year that instead of auditor's name being on the ballot, so we would need to have a county seal on the ballot. So we didn't really have anything that didn't have auditor on it or treasurer on it. So we decided to just create something new. So this is what we came up with, and we'd like approval for it to be on the ballots going forward.
I thought you did a beautiful, nice job.
I think they turned out pretty well.
So I move to approve the official seal design for the county.
Support.
Any further discussion? All those in favor of the official county seal design, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, same sign. We have a force, Resolution 2019-22. This is operating transfer of Northwest Urban Renewal Tiff Fund to Northwest Urban Renewal Tiff Debt Service Fund to General Fund. We're asking, this resolution would put $14,200 back into the general fund for the expenses occurred to establish this Tiff area.
That will be approved, Resolution 2019-22.
Second that.
Any further discussion? All those in favor of Resolution 2019-22, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, same sign. Before us, we also have Resolution 2019-23. This is a transfer of $374,032.60 for the radio system capital project fund to the general fund. We did receive our grant money last week for the radio system, or the bond, excuse me, bond money. And now we are, what we're doing is we're repaying our general fund, which we paid out of so far until we received our bond money. So this is just repaying ourselves what we borrowed against until we received our bond money.
I make a motion that we approve 2019-23 Resolution. Support.
Any further discussion? All those in favor of Resolution 2019-23, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, same sign. Also have Resolution 2019-24. Transfer of $24,719.40 from the general fund to the Law Enforcement Center Improvement Fund. Last summer, we bricked the outside of the building, put some new, put a new roof on, stopped a lot of moisture issues we were having inside the building. Most of the fund money came from the leftover penny tax from 20 years ago. But we were $24,000 short. And so we need a resolution to finish paying off that expense.
That will be approved, Resolution 2019-24.
Second that.
Any further discussion? All those in favor of Resolution 2019-24, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, same sign. We have approved 20 police protections with the city of Eddyville, city of University Park, and Kewa Village. Sheriff, would you like to add anything to these?
I don't, I don't have anything more to add of what we talked about in our work session here from a couple weeks ago. The 2080s that Andrew Rittman came up with, the free boilerplate, pretty standard. I do take issue. I sent it an email to Andrew on payment form, and Mark and I have visited about it. And I know that's, that's going to be the next discussion item under number 16. I said in that meeting, and I told you gentlemen, that it doesn't matter to me whether the payment comes in equipment to the sheriff's office or to the general fund, if I know that ahead of time before I do my budget. And I don't for this coming fiscal year. Eddyville is not, they've always paid the general fund. Kewa Village is a new 2080 agreement. And University Park is one of the towns that have always bought us equipment in lieu of payment. University Park Beacon and Fremont is kind of putting me behind the eight ball, if you will. Because I understand we had discussion in my budget hearing about the horse trading, I think is what you gentlemen called it.
That's what I called it, yes.
And I understand that, I do, even though we've documented all of that during my budget meeting. I did, down here, I agreed to cut some out of the line item for new vehicle setup. And I told you three that I would use the money from these cities as that set of money. At that time, I was still under the impression that this coming fiscal year, the payment would come in equipment. I was still under that impression following the work session the other day. And it was after that work session when Andrew drew up the new 2080 agreement that I became aware that you were not going to allow me to do that, so. And that's where, that's one of the comments I have, Mark.
Yeah, that's what, we reached out, we talked about this this afternoon.
Right.
And so there's some things we need to work on before October, get some things resolved. We're going to be on the same page, one way or the other.
I'm going to make my budget work regardless of what happens. But the three towns that did buy us, now they, I've heard several comments, and I'm not going to speak on their behalf, but there is some concern there. I do know a couple of the mayors, they were concerned that they want their money going to support the sheriff's office, which when we, when they buy us equipment, they know that. Because like I said in the past, I've been involved for three years. None of the money ever comes to us. It's not like these cities give us the money, and if we go buy equipment, we order equipment, they send their checks directly to the company, and that's all documented. So none of it even passes through my office. Again, I feel like I'm 13,000 shy on this coming budget. Because I did not know, they were not going to be allowed to buy me equipment until following the Thursday night meeting.
So you bought equipment, board equipments.
I haven't, I haven't done it yet, no. No, but I was during our budget hearing, Steve, I told you guys when I cut, I can't remember, Mark, do you remember? It was six or eight thousand I cut out of one particular line item. And I remember saying, well, I'll use my, the contract money from these three towns to make up that difference. I'll make it work. I'll make the budget work, but I'm behind the eight ball right from the get-go, 13,000. And then, yeah, that'd be the only comments I would have for the next discussion item on your agenda as well.
Yeah, and I think a little bit just touching up, it's just a lot more transparent if all the towns do it exactly the same way and everybody knows exactly where the money's going.
And like I, like I was telling you in the, in the work session, I'm all for that, if I know that before my budget time.
And a little bit, that was probably, you know, you just get into this, and you go through the budget the first time, it's pretty overwhelming, and I probably didn't catch everything about the renewal of the...
I'm not standing here saying it's anybody's fault.
You know, no, I ain't either. I'm just telling you, house kind of things fall through the cracks once in a while. And I think it's just time before we sign the 2080s to get everybody on a level playing field.
Well, right, and just so you gentlemen know, when it comes to University Park, Beacon, and Fremont, I have not decided yet at this point whether I'm going to approve those 2080 agreements. So I'm still pondering that.
Okay, so what's the holdup? What are you pondering?
The holdup is I'm 13,000 shy on my next year's budget now, because of this whole issue.
So it'll cost more for you to patrol, did you go and get them?
Well, the, what I was anticipating using, I was anticipating using that 13,000 to make up the difference from what I cut out of my patrol vehicle and setup line item. And now I'm not going to have that money to put toward that. I'll make it work, yeah, and I'll make it work.
We've missed, we've missed connection someplace, because the minute show, we talked about everything. We're just not on the same page somehow.
Right, yep. Pretty certain I would have remembered if you guys had said during my budget, when I said I'll use the contract money from these towns to make up this difference. I'm pretty certain I would have remembered if you guys had said, no, we're not going to allow you to do that. It's water under the bridge, we'll get by.
We've just got a lot of work to do between us and you and this board and with Paul, and working some things out to get some things...
Yeah, Paul, I don't know that what HR has to do with this issue, but that's, you had mentioned earlier that I could reach out to him. I don't think it's a human resource issue, the 2080 agreements with these incorporated cities, so.
I'm looking forward next October to redoing this stuff the way it should be done exactly, and that'd be good, so. Thank you, Russ.
We need a motion to approve the 2080 police protections if we want to accept these offers for service.
I make that motion. We set the 2080s as signed by the cities.
Can we get all one motion for all three of them, same thing?
Same.
Two motion?
Yep, all three of them. Yeah, you want to do them one by one, we can.
No, we accept all three.
They're all lights.
They're all three before us.
Yep.
I support that. Any further discussion? All those in favor of accepting the 2080 police protections for the city of Eddyville, city of University Park, and Kewa Village, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Russ mentioned the next item, discuss 2080 police protection for University Park, Fremont, and Beacon. Andrew's not here, our county attorney, and he's the one that called me and asked us to be on the agenda.
Andrew's not here, our county attorney, and he's the one that called me and asked us to be on the agenda. He drew up contracts for all the cities that sent them out, and then Russ liked to have some of the money from University Park, Fremont, and Beacon, he paid to for expenses, or for new equipment. And so he asked us to put us on the agenda for, to get him out of the middle, basically, because it's not his position to be in the middle. We're supposed to be the policymakers, and so he asked us to decide it. I know we've talked about this work sessions and numerous other times, so.
Basically, what we're doing is just putting the money into the general fund that the cities pay for police protection.
And we cannot take action on this, this is just discussion.
Okay.
So this is basically just a consensus, whether we want the money to go to the general fund, or if there's expenses, it's all thrown on a county warrant, so there's proof of everything for transparency, or we want the cities to pay for the sheriff, equipment directly through the cities, and the county have no, no proof of income or expense.
I'm looking for that, but I'm not so sure we should allow Russ to have part of this money that he was figuring on this year, because we wouldn't allow the cities to get by this one more year. If only.
Yeah, I remember talking about it, though, in February, so I mean, I'm not on the same page.
Okay. I've been having a problem with doing that. It's a very small amount of money. I definitely think after this year, it should be out in the open, and everybody knows what's going on.
I think, yeah. I've said what I've said in the work session before.
Just for discussions, I think we discussed it. Right?
I think we need to know exactly where everybody's at. I think it needs to go to the general fund.
I do, too. I do, too. How many are we talking about here?
15,000.
All three towns? No, because some of them already go to the general fund. Some do it one way, some do it the other. We're just trying to make it all the same and transparent. So everything goes through. If I have to decide, I guess I'd go to the general fund this time, but I think when the agreements are made, they need to be out, everybody can see them, and everybody knows what's going on.
Need to approve the secondary road non-union salaries for fiscal year 19 and 20 for Mike Rodwell, Ed Guma, and Deborah Walling.
I approve that we approve the secondary road non-union salaries. Second that. 2020. Second that.
Any further discussion? This is for a 55 cent hour to your increase. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose, same sign. Consider creation of a contract as part of an offer to candidate for economic development director position. We had an interview with Tom Flaherty Thursday. I looked at it, we should have a contract, same as like a secondary road engineer. I guess in the contract, I'd like to see some things listed that I think we should encourage him to work on, we can review every year. To see if we want to keep moving forward, or if it just keeps going from there.
I agree with that.
I've had a lot of support from a lot of businesses, whether it's in the unincorporated area or the incorporated area of the county. They wanted, they'd like to have an independent voice with non-membership fees or anything else attached to what they'd like to see done for their expansion. Ann and I talked Friday. They moved forward with this, they'd like to work together with us, and we'd like to work together with them. Received an email from Carrie, I think sent out Friday, they'd like to work as one unit as well. I think this could be very inclusive, which means there's no boundaries here. As an individual, it can be for all the cities, no matter the location, or unincorporated area.
Everybody from the plug will have total access to this position if we hire someone.
An individual or business.
Correct.
And the entire bounds of Mahasset County would have access to this individual.
I just wanted to throw that out there.
I did talk to, after our interview, I did talk to a Scott County supervisor, which is Davenport, and he encouraged me to vote no on this. He would like to, for us to decline Tom, because he'd like to put him on his table. So that's where, that's Davenport's supervisor's thoughts of Tom.
I make a motion that we do look into doing a contract with Tom Flaherty for, I don't know what exactly the contract looks like yet, but get one drawed up and move forward on it.
So a motion to create a contract, and you can have him build his position?
Yes. Support.
Further discussion?
When do you think the other contract?
One of us will always have to work with Andrew to drop the contract. I guess I'd like to discuss what we want in the terms of the contract. I guess I'd like to see it in the contract, probably a three-year contract, which could be reviewed. If it starts July 1, reviewed May 1 of every year. And either party can terminate it on the anniversary date, otherwise it's automatically renewed, nobody terminates.
July 1st.
Correct.
Sounds good.
I guess, Mary, I'd like to see worked on as workforce development.
Housing.
There's a lot of different types of housing.
I know. I think we need some housing studies done and whatever, and maybe some senior housing and some housing developments, maybe in some smaller local towns and stuff. I've been approached by an individual that's maybe interested in doing a housing development, he just don't know where to start or what to do. So I'm hoping Tom can help us with some kind of contacts. And I hope so on infrastructure, too, so.
I know some smaller towns have approached me, they'd like to help with some housing in their own small towns.
Pathfinder does some studies on this housing in this area of the past county, not the area down here. So I'm going to look, check into that, see if it's duplicating.
I think there's a lot of studies on the housing done for our area, just need to get everybody together and fine tune it as soon as we need to go.
Yeah, I'm sure there's some overlap sometimes, if people could work together that we're missing out on. I'm hoping this, some of his expertise will fall into that, too, because I'm on some housing committees in different places. So hopefully, we can all work together and gain a little speed, a little faster, so that's where I'm at on it, so.
So I understand, excuse me, I understand the motion to create a contract with Tom Flaherty.
Correct.
With a three-year contract, let's review May 1, automatic renewal unless either party terminates on June 30. And include the items we discussed.
Correct. Support.
Do you have a motion?
Yeah, I have a motion.
There's a motion, we just made a bunch of amendments to it, I guess. I'm going to make a motion to accept the amendments to the original motion.
Second that.
Any further discussion on the amendments?
Yeah, second that.
All those in favor of the amendments, please say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Motion on the original motion with the amendment attached, please say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Committee reports.
Don't have a lot. I went to District Eight Judicial down in the common, which is our prison system for our region of the state. And they're doing some changes on how they deal with inmates coming out of jail is a lot of it, and how they work with them individuals and their risk assessments. So there's going to be some employees moving around, and probably some maybe jobs changing a little, but that's about all. They don't have it down perfect what they're going to do yet, so. Just a little update on that. Animal shelter meeting coming up here, so we'll have that to talk about. And then we're going to meet at Cedar tomorrow, you said, so that's my line.
We met with Decat this afternoon. Fiscal year ends June 30. Some of it we did not, we get some funds left over from DHS for Decat, and then we use those funds to help dads, moms, families through public or private entities in our area, through contracts. Some of those contracts got used up and some did not, so some of that money will be returned to the state. We'll start over again July 1st, so. Anything else? Public comments? Carrie? Please come up. Hi, Carrie.
Last time, if I open my mouth, I have to come sit up here, right?
Smile. Say cheese.
Use some crackers and wine with that, too. Last time when I was here, I came to talk representing the MDP group and about the collaboration and the teamwork and the efforts we've had going, excuse me, to talk about the retreat that we had that day, invited a few fellows here, and you did come and enjoy it and stuff. So we're still moving forward on that path. Since we've learned of the business development director that you were hiring, there has been some concern through the whole area of that, on how that's going to coordinate with the MDP strategic plan and for us to continue working together. I guess that's something we really need to consider and need to let the rest of the group go out there. You know, as the email that I sent out Friday, we came to support Ann and Dee for the efforts to, you know, to let you know we support them all and everything they've done and all the great progress they've made. The community really reaches out to them and respects them. We don't want a new position that is going to maybe perhaps put some cracks in that. So I guess I'm here on behalf of the MDP committee to make sure that we're all still on the same page of working together, building relationships, the concern of doubling up on everything that we've got the efforts going on already out there. How is that going to work in the scheme of things? We don't want two people knocking on everybody's door. That certainly doesn't do any good for the community or look any good for the efforts that we're doing, so. Yeah, I just wanted to make sure that the county remains on the same stats as we do, that we've been working together and continue coordinating for the MDP and all the efforts.
I'm sure it's going to work out. There's other counties that are struggling through this, where the, I spoke with other counties, and they're watching us, because they're thinking about doing the same thing, and some of them have done the same thing, so. It's a work in progress, and the counties are doing this. It'll work. We all want to get along, we all want to see, we all want to, we're all for the same goal.
Right.
See the businesses grow we have here, maintain the infrastructure, see the families, see the kids stay here, have jobs, have some good housing, build some roots. I think we're all for the same goal, so I think it's a good thing.
Okay. All right, thank you for your time.
You bet. Thank you. Make the most of today, Jared.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. Thanks for coming, everyone.